Think you need to take the roll again. You can show that all seven board members are still there. I can see everybody is still present. We have no items added for good cause. Superintendent, are you withdrawing anything today?
No, I'm not withdrawing, but if I could have Ms. Issa un-present her screen, I'd appreciate it.
Board members, are there any items you wish to pull from the consent agenda? Dr. Robinson?
Yes, I really, I think I need to ask legal if this is something I need to pull to make the changes in the student's code of conduct that I suggested, the clarification there about the use of drugs and so forth. Do I need to pull those to do that or is that scrimmers?
Well, that was just, correct me if I'm wrong, presenters, but I believe that, are you talking about what you just discussed?
Yes, it's on the agenda now.
Yeah, I would go ahead and pull it then.
Okay, so I'd like to pull both of the student codes of conduct.
Okay, anything else? All right, we need a motion to approve the agenda as modi- uh, I'm sorry, yes, motion to approve the agenda is modified. Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mrs. Woodfield. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Takes us to agenda items. Speakers, we have none at this meeting. So we're down to new business. Trying to remember which buttons we push in the controller.
Actually, if you'll vote on the consent agenda, that was the regular agenda, now the consent agenda, and I am in the process of moving those two items that you just pulled. And so in a minute, F5 to refresh.
Okay, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda then. Motion by Ms. Brill, second by Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. I see they've been moved. No, they haven't. Is it Control F5, Mrs. Bass?
Hopefully, it's just F5 or the little round circle up at the top.
Give me a minute, folks.
Yeah, Mr. Bobby, I just refreshed. It may not quite be up yet.
They are down under new business, so if you refresh now, you should see them.
All right, Mrs. Bass, it won't work on my computer, so just tell me which item is next. Is it P1?
P1, yes.
Superintendent, P1?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I recommend the board approve the personnel agenda as revised.
Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Ms. Brill. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item, Mr. Superintendent, I'm not sure which one that is, but you can see it on your screen, I think.
Yes, sir. It is POL-A1, Policy 5.1812. I recommend the board approve the development of proposed revised policy 5.1812, Student Code of Conduct for Elementary School Students, K5.
Motion by Ms. Brill, second by Mrs. Andrews. Dr. Robinson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. This is just to ask, and I don't have the exact location or the wording, but did this be tweaked to specify that the use of drugs in the policy specifically refers to on-campus or under the influence in addition to the other notes?
All right, do we have a second on Dr. Robinson's motion? Motion by, second by Ms. Brill? Any further discussion? Mrs. Rico, do you understand exactly what the change is?
Yes, the team between Ms. Issa and Ms. Carmona have those items, and they'll then bring those back when we have second read.
Hey, Dr. Fnoy, are you okay with the change?
Yes, sir, I am.
All right, no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next item, Mr. Superintendent, is POL-A2?
Yes, sir, POL-A2, Policy 5.1813, Student Code of Conduct for Secondary School Students, 612, in development. I recommend the board approve the development of the proposed revised policy 5.1813, Student Code of Conduct for Secondary School Students, 612.
Motion by Ms. Brill, second by Mrs. Woodfield. Discussion, Dr. Robinson?
Yes, same discussion, request that it be reworded to specify that it admits to use on-campus or under the influence in addition to the wording here.
Second on Dr. Robinson's motion. By Mrs. Andrews. Any discussion? Superintendent, are you okay with that change?
Yes, sir, I'm fine with that change.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That's the end of the agenda items. We're now going to board discussion items. Mrs. Rico?
Did you vote on the entire policies in addition to the amendments?
I don't believe we did. So back to BD1. We've got an amended BD1. No, that's not BD1. POL1, we have an amendment to POL1. Let's vote on the main motion now with the modification that Dr. Robinson made. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Same for POL2 with the modification that Dr. Robinson made. Vote on the main motion. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That takes us now, thank you, Mrs. Rico, that takes us now to BD1, board discussion item, Mrs. Brill, future school start dates?
Thank you. So I started this discussion about a week ago, although it's been going on for quite some time. You know, we've discussed as a board the possibility of starting later our school year. The main objection we've had over the discussions has been the gap in pay. So we're now in a situation where if we decided to start a little bit later, there would be no gap. My preference would have been to start as late as possible, but I understand that parents, teachers, and principals are concerned about ending the semester before the holiday break, so I'm completely understanding of that. But what I would like to do is to instruct the superintendent to come back, speak to the calendar committee and see, and I guess we could override it, but I would like us to not start school any earlier than the third Monday in the month of August. And that would mitigate any problems in terms of testing rather than going with the fourth week, but it would also make it so that we're not starting as early as we had planned this year.
Anybody else want, the Mrs. Woodfield? Mrs. Woodfield, you had your hand up and you must have pushed your button and you disappeared. Yeah, there you are. Go ahead.
My power went out here, so I had to get on my phone, so a little bit of a learning curve. So, Mrs. Brill, you were talking about for next year, is that correct?
I am speaking about from next year going forward, so that future calendars that we look at the third week, the third Monday, as the first start date, no earlier than that, so we don't wind up starting less than two weeks into the month of August.
So my opinion on that right now is that we should wait to have this discussion until we're through this current crisis that we're in. I know we need to plan ahead, but I feel like there's just too many things going on to have this discussion, and I would really like, I mean, we can, we could, you know, create a workshop around it and have the calendar committee plan for it, but I think it needs to be in at least a couple months' time. I really feel like the staff has just way too much on their plate at this point.
Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. I do agree with Ms. Woodfield. We're in really turbulent times right now, and I know that we want to plan ahead and do what we have to do, but I truly know that I want that input from the calendar committee, which represents all of the different factions of the school district of Palm Beach County, our teachers, our bus drivers, all of our unions, as well as others, to give us input. And this is a day-to-day process that we're in right now, so I'm hoping that once we can kind of see some clearance at the end of the tunnel, then maybe that committee can have some discussions and working with the board as we move forward.
Go ahead, Ms. Brill.
So just as a follow-up, you know, we have planned ahead our calendars, and this is an ideal opportunity since there won't be a pay gap, so I understand there's a lot of, I don't mind putting it off for a couple of months, but the main objection has always been that pay gap, and I understand that there are some recommended policy changes that are coming forward as well as our bargaining agreements. So I think this is an opportune time as we move forward with that, but I wanted to put that out there because it just happens that when, and we're not talking about a big change, we're talking about a week. So when we are ready to look to next year and to refine that calendar, I think the superintendent kind of knows already where we're going with this, but I think that we just need to chime in. You know, we did vote on a change prior, and it was, we were split, so I just want to put that out there because the main objection, as I said, was the pay gap, and that is not going to exist at this point.
Mrs. Rico, I saw your hand up.
No, I think Mrs. Brill addressed it. I mean, there are policy changes, et cetera. We had issued you all some guidance on that. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Brill, I agree with you. I also agree with the other board members that we should postpone it. Just in my discussions today with the superintendent, he suggested that we probably should hold off giving the administration any more work to do right now with everything that they're already having on their plate, so if we can hold off and giving them any more directions on things we want changed until they figure out how we're going to reopen our system. Ms. Brill?
Thank you, and I'm fine with that. I really, to be honest with you, was just so excited that the opportunity might exist to make that change that I really didn't give that consideration. So yes, and I would like the superintendent, once he has the opportunity to socialize it through the bargaining units, through the principals, you know, making sure there's no impact on testing and making sure that it won't put us in a precarious situation. So yes, let's push it down the road, but make sure it stays on our radar.
Yeah, we'll put it on the list. Well, actually, we will at some point bring back a workshop. I'll put it on our list so that it's memorialized, and we will do that. We will do that. I got you.
The next item is BRD2, and I can't see it because my computer's froze up here, so whoever's on BRD2, go ahead and take it away.
Okay, it's Mrs. Andrews, and it says virtual open house. I've had an opportunity to speak with the superintendent as well as Wanda Paul, our Chief of Operations, but I got this idea from our Council of Great City Schools as I sit in on the Friday conferences. And I think we've done some of this already, but I'm talking about a video presentation, especially for the parents as well as the community, about what school will look like as we begin to go back into brick and mortar. Now, we saw some of these pictures when we did the town halls for the different regions, where we saw the bus drivers and the, saw some of the custodians cleaning and doing some of the things necessary. But I think parents want to see how it will look if we're going back into a middle school or elementary school or high school with the spacing piece, how it would look, you know, with the buses, if we're going to have panels behind the driver. And if we had some type of video, a virtual presentation on the front of our website that if a parent was deciding whether I'm coming back to the district's public schools or not because I want to feel safe, I can kind of look at some of the things that's happening. I think this would be something that would be ongoing because we'll probably be making changes as we go and get ready for the brick and mortar piece. But some of the districts, some of the large districts across the United States have done these open houses, and it seems like it was pretty popular. So I think it's a wonderful way to get information to people who are really trying to decide what they're going to do with their children. It's good for teachers to see it as well as parents, children, because they're all kind of anxious to get back to brick and mortar, and the more information we can share with them about how we're going to keep them safe, the better.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, not only do I agree, Ms. Andrews, we've already started working on this, and so I want to share with the board, communications created numerous videos, as Ms. Andrews stated, throughout the summer and has been shared widely, cleaning, summer learning, digital divide, construction, all in multiple languages. On August the 3rd, I will record a back-to-school message for students and staff. This will release before classes begin on August the 31st. Shortly after, I will record another video, which may be described as a virtual open house. This will be released before students start returning to brick and mortar. The video will give a comprehensive overview of what students will encounter from the moment they arrive at the bus stop or parent drop-off line, to the traffic flow and social distancing of students inside schools, the configuration of classrooms, to the availability of sanitizers and soap, all the way through the end of the day. As far as the classroom configuration, we spoke to the principals of the day, there are many variables, so this will look different to accommodate the unique contributing factors at every school. Desk size, tables, shape of room, square footage, all of those things. And the chief of police and his team and operations have worked through this as well. Work is currently underway to determine important elements such as the configuration of desks, and more importantly, flow patterns in school. So, you know, those of us that were high school principals, you know, how are we going to transition kids in those environments? It's very interesting when you're on these national calls, you have to recognize a lot of school districts are much, much smaller than us, and so when they think about it, they say, oh, we'll just move the teachers around. Well, in the average high school class in our district, they all have different schedules, so there's no way to move all the teachers around, so we have to work through those pieces as we think about it, but I'm very excited that the regionals and the principals already started doing that work. Additionally, we have a news conference scheduled for August the 18th. That will take place at Fulton Hall, and then we will stream that live. We also will have phone banks with operators speaking in multiple languages, and that will open on August 19th and run through the first week of school or longer if needed. So those are just some of our current thoughts and actions that we're moving towards, but I wanted to share that with the board as you continue the discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Fnoy. I guess that pretty well answers all of our questions on that one. Thank you very much. Board members, I neglected to ask if you had any comments, and the superintendent certainly may have had some comments when we were up in that section. I guess I was in a hurry to get through that part of the agenda. Mr. Superintendent, do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight?
Yes, sir, I don't think you were trying to rush through. It just happens. But good afternoon, everyone. The district remains hard at work as we prepare to welcome back students via distance learning on August the 31st. Two questionnaires were distributed this week, one to parents and others to staff. Whether you are a parent, a member of Team Palm Beach, or both, I encourage you to fill out the survey that applies to you and return it by August the 3rd. The information collected from these questionnaires will assist us as the district ultimately shifts back to in-person instruction. Although our teachers are not able, are not due to return to work until August 12th, the level of dedication to professional development and growth continues to prove that our district has some of the best educators in the country. This summer, educators have logged in to more than, have logged in more than 30,000 times to take part in 265 different professional development courses for virtual learning. Some of these courses involve social emotional learning, Google Classroom, differentiated instruction, what helps teachers adapt methods to the needs of individual students. Speaking of individual needs, I am proud to recognize Ford Eloja, who is one of our extraordinary translators in the multicultural department. Ford has been selected as the chief delegate by the Haitian Diaspora Federation of Florida. Congratulations to you, Ford. This is important to the district because this will continue to help further our connection to Haiti and support our Haitian community within the district, particularly as we are working to develop Haitian Creole language programs. I'd also take this opportunity to thank the district's food service workers, who have served more than 4 million grab-and-go meals to our students since campuses closed March 13. In addition to the dozens of sites we already have open, the district will increase the number to 132 feeding sites beginning on August 11. When distance learning begins on August 31st, the number of sites will be increased further. Again, a big thank you to everyone on Team Palm Beach who is involved for your hard work against this data and the harder work that we have to do for the remainder of this month. Mr. Chairman, those are my comments at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Fnoy. Word comments, Mr. McQuinn, do you have anything you wanted to say tonight? If you do, go ahead.
I actually do, and he was trying to hurry through. We know that. Not really. You're doing a great job. I wouldn't want your position for all the world right now keeping us all in line. I've learned over my last three and a half years on the board to do a better job of preparing my comments, much from the suggestion of my husband, but I'm not speaking off the cuff about this, but I am speaking without prepared remarks. It's been a few difficult weeks for everyone, superintendent and staff, certainly board members. I think perhaps even more so for our parents, and I, you know, sometimes even in the same household, parents don't agree, so you know, over a school district this size, we're not all going to agree. But the one thing that I have recognized, and I remind myself to continue doing so, is that parents love their kids, and so I would expect that passion regardless of whether we are wanting our children in bricks and mortar right away, or whether we never want them back in bricks and mortar. It's all for the love of their children. And so I just wanted to say that, that when I want to get frustrated if somebody doesn't agree with me, not when I think back about why they are expressing so vehemently their views. So actually, I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. McQuinn. Mr. Shaw? Ms. Brill? Mrs. Woodfield? Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that in the Glades Region, we had an excellent town hall meeting last Thursday. It was sponsored by the Tri-Cities of Glades Region. Communications about the school district and COVID-19 was presented by the three mayors from Pahokee, Bell Glade, and South Bay, along with our region superintendent for the Glades Region, Angela Moore. Mary Evans was also a presenter, along with our county administrator, Mrs. Baker, and I was there to really bring greetings and talk about how schools will be looking in the future as we go into distance learning and getting back to brick and mortar. The town hall presentation can be found on the Guardians of the Glades Facebook page, and it can also be found at www.brotherchurch.com. And I want to thank the Guardians of the Glades. They have been out in the Glades Region, feeding, helping the folks get masks, and educating them on this horrible, horrible condition that we're going through with COVID-19. And so Brother Church, who is one of the leaders at WSWN radio station, he's putting the word out to the parents so they will know what's going on as it relates to COVID-19 as well as the school district. So it was a wonderful activity for me to participate in, but most so getting the word out about how serious it is with COVID-19 and how we're going to do our best to make sure all the children in the Glades get back to instruction, making sure that they have their computers and their internet connections and all the things that they need for success. And lastly, I just want to take this time to say the loss of our great Congressman, John Lewis. He marched and was beaten on the Edmund Pettus Bridge, fighting for civil rights. We all are going to miss him. We're so thankful for all the things he did for this country in taking us to the next level. He taught us how to get in good trouble and making a difference, especially for African-Americans. He will be missed, but we must continue his legacy. He has a great legacy as it relates to African-Americans, going back to the civil rights for all of us. So our children need to know about this great hero. They've probably seen it on television over the last few days, but we have to emphasize a John Lewis of the world. He was a protester. He started as a teenager, making a difference, getting in good trouble, highlighting the inequities in this United States of America, trying to make a difference and to make the world great. And he reminds me so much of Dr. Martin Luther King, because everything that he did, he did it in a peaceful way. And his body was beaten, his body was bruised, his body was tormented, but it never took his spirit away for making the difference for the United States of America, for all people to be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. So to follow Mrs. McQuinn, I am going to give some unscripted comments, which is always dangerous, and I want to follow on the heels of Mrs. Andrews and just say that we do need to make sure that, first, that all of our adults and then all of our students understand the story of John Lewis. I just have to share a little bit, if you will, just allow me to get sidetracked a bit. So when I was a little girl, after the march on, across the Edmund Pettus Bridge, there was this outrage in my house, and as a little girl, I didn't understand all this confusion, but what I knew was that my daddy and his friends were packing to go to Selma. And so part of the story is that a week or two after that infamous march across the bridge, there was another march, but thousands and thousands of people joined the original marches. And so my daddy and his crew were part of that second march, and what I remember is seeing the pictures when he returned, and there was a picture of a man, a black man with one of those old sandwich boards, and it said, "Who's afraid of hell when there's Selma?" And as a little girl, that stuck with me. And so now to watch as we celebrate the life of this hero is just really important to me that we understand and appreciate his long walk, his good trouble, and that our young people understand that too. And so along the same lines, a related line, just prior to this meeting, I participated partially in some work being organized through the county and the Government Alliance for Racial Equity, and they were presenting the toolkit that the Government Alliance for Racial Equity has on creating a racial equity plan. And I say that because I would hope that this school district, who has an equity policy, moves forward in creating a racial equity plan. And with that, I'll close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. The week before last, I spoke about how kindness matters, and then last week, I had a meeting with Mr. Oswald, Mrs. Dr. Sheffield, and Mr. Tierney, and I have to tell you that I was not kind, and I personally apologize to them, but I wanted to publicly apologize to them. The stress level is high for all of us. It's probably as high as it's ever been and will ever be again, and I think we all need to remember, especially me, because I have an interaction with all the staff members regularly every week, that they're, you know, they're doing the best they can under circumstances that none of us ever could have anticipated and hopefully will never have to face again. And we all need to remember that staff is working very, very hard to come up with answers to all the questions that we're giving them, and we all have to remember to just, that they're stressed as we are and that they need, they need, they need some kindness. So again, I apologize to Dr. Sheffield, Mr. Oswald, and Mr. Tierney. I was not nice to you, and I apologize for that, but we all need to remember that all of us are under extreme amount of stress. One thing I forgot to do was wish Mr. Shaw happy birthday. Yesterday was his birthday, and so we can't give you a cupcake, Mr. Shaw, because you're home, but when we ever get back here, hopefully someday we'll all be back here, Mrs. Bass will make sure that there's a cupcake in front of your computer when we get back here soon enough. And Mr. Shaw, I think the last board discussion item is yours, and that's BD3, if you want to go ahead and take it now.
Thank you very much. This one, first, I want to start this, and I am, what I'm going to talk about, I don't expect any action today or any effort for staff to have to do additional work. And what I'm about to discuss is simply, I think, one of the most serious issues that we will face long-term as we move out of the distance learning, move into regular instruction, and then at some time when we start moving back into what will be a new normal situation. And that's the issue of how we put together a remediation plan for our students to move forward, because I don't think anybody would- Because I don't think anybody would disagree that students have struggled for the last several months. And I'm not sure that we're going to see an end to this for several months more. And it's going to just exasperate the whole thing considerably. So what I'm asking is that we support the superintendent and staff in creating a real strategically-driven plan for long-term remediation and services to our kids. Because here are some of the issues that I think we face. I think one of them is that we will likely have compensatory education requests that will cost us money. I think we're going to have issues that deal with the equitable distribution of our supplies and materials, but equity for our students because we have students that will struggle through this for a long period of time, our ELL kids. But also, we have students that are in our choice programs who are missing labs, that are missing a lot of activities. Some of our choice programs, our environmental programs where students would be doing lessons and activities off-campus, those are all going to disappear for a long period of time. But the benefits of the instruction that students get in all of these areas, I think, is a critical need that we have. So I'm hoping that we will be united as a board in letting the superintendent's staff begin that discussion and have on their radar screen the issues. I think the biggest challenge we might have may very well be that the state is not going to fund to any satisfactory degree the real needs that we have two, three years from now. And it's going to be incumbent on us to be able to move forward and do these things with the resources that we have, knowing we may not be getting either federal or state support on these. And also, I think that it's not too early for us to look that some of these may drive some legislative issues that we need to do and ask Mr. Leface to work through. Because there may be some issues that could be addressed with our advocacy during the legislative session that starts in March. And we need to be able to think these things through. As soon as we finish, in fact, on my other computer, we've got a Greater Florida Consortium meeting going on at the same time, and I'm going to discuss this with them. So I think, again, this is not asking the superintendent to do anything, although in his free time, I'm sure he wouldn't mind doing all these extra things. But please keep it on the radar that this is something that I think will have impact. It's well beyond anything that we've seen. So thank you very much.
Mr. Shaw, I appreciate those comments, Chairman, if you don't mind. So there hasn't been a board member who has not had this conversation with me. All seven of you have this exact conversation. So as I look at it, so not only do we have to do it, we will. And I would probably suggest, and Mr. Tierney knows this, once we get school open, we must start working on our next iteration of our strategic plan. In that strategic plan, I propose that it's going to have an equity focus, and this remediation plan has to be a part of it. I mean, this is the reality of where we're at. I think because, you know, the way the board and the previous administration created the strategic plan, it's multiple years. And so I think to your point around, and I think several board members have said in conversations over the last couple of months, we will be dealing with this for years. And so I think when we think about our strategic planning initiative, I think we memorialize equity, we memorialize this remediation as part of that along with the other things that we decide. So, Mr. Shaw, you're not asking us to do any additional work because I think that is the work. That absolutely is the work. And so we will commit to that. And Mr. Tierney and I recently talked about strategic planning efforts once we get school started. So it is duly noted, and we will govern ourselves accordingly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Shaw. I think you probably summarized it for all of us because we all have the same concerns about how we're ever going to be able to let these kids catch up to where they should be. Ms. Brill, and then Dr. Robinson?
Thank you. And, Mr. Shaw, thank you for bringing that up because I really think that this will provide us with a venue to be able to help support the children whose parents may not know to ask for this, to make sure that we are equitable, that, you know, talking about remediation for all students is really imperative. You know, ESC students do have the option for compensatory education, but really, all of the children are going to need that. And so I think this is, it's wonderful that we're looking at that. And to Dr. Fnoy, absolutely, this will be a piece in our strategic plan. It has to be. But this is going to help us level the playing field, and it ties very much into equity also. So I welcome our discussions on that.
Go ahead, Dr. Robinson.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Shaw, for bringing this up again. You know, I have snuck in the comment about setting money aside for this kind of catch-up work, if you will. And so I'm really glad to hear Mr. Shaw bring this forward again. I just want to say that while we know that a lot of students had difficulty during distance learning and 1.0 and probably 2.0 as well, hopefully much less so, but there were children, there are children that this system was serving just fine before the pandemic. And then there were those that we were not serving just fine. And so I just don't want us to get so focused on the newly fallen behind that we forget the forever fallen behind. And so equity, as I've said before, is blessing them according to their needs. And so let's make sure we do just that. I am really thrilled to hear that all seven board members have shared this concern. But just remember, there are those who have been left behind, who then had the COVID-19 slide, then had summer slide, then might have another COVID-19 slide. And so let's try to meet the needs of all children and bless them according to their needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Well said. Mrs. Andrews?
Thank you. And this is such an important area. It gives me a chance to say thank you again to the Boys and Girls Club and all of the other agencies who have picked up the slack while we have been closed and educating our children and helping them emotionally and socially. And we have so many community people that want to be a part of this remediation process. I know that we depend heavily on our teachers, but we have a lot of community groups, like the Tri-Cities Education out in the Glades Region, the sororities and the fraternities. We have to put a plan together so that it's going to encompass not just a classroom time, but outside of the classroom during the weekend, whatever it takes to help these children that's been left behind before the pandemic and more so behind now that we're into all of this distance learning, and many of them haven't been a part of this process since we started. So we've got to pull a lot more people under our umbrella to help us with this and hear their ideas of how we can help the children. Many times, they know a lot about our children as well as our teachers, but a lot more because many times, they're right in the neighborhood and they know some of the kinds of things that can be done to help move our children forward. So it's a great thing that we've got to do. But let's add some more to the list to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Is there any more discussion? All right, we need a motion to adjourn. Before we do that, though, we have a time-certain meeting at 5:05, and I was just informed that we can't start it early. So once we adjourn this meeting, we're going to be gone until 5:05, which will, then we'll take up the budget meeting at 5:05. So we have a motion to adjourn this meeting. Motion by Mrs. Andrews, seconded by Mrs. Whitfield. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything else you want to say before we sign off?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'd like to take a personal point of privilege to bring the deputy superintendent forward. The business of the district is still moving forward in the middle of a crisis, and we have some exciting news to share.
Thank you, Dr. Fnoy. And again, good afternoon, board members. We have some principal changes that are happening here in Palm Beach County. First one I'd like to tell you about is Pamela Buckman, who has been serving the last six years out in the Glades at Pioneer Park Elementary. She will be transferring over to Beacon Cove Elementary School. And she's done great work out there in the Glades. I know Ms. Andrews will probably miss her greatly. And then we have a vacancy at Point Sienna Elementary School due to retirement. And Tanya McDowell, who's been leading Assistant Principal, most recently at LC Swain, will be taking on the principalship there at Point Sienna Elementary School. So when we do get back to the building, we will have Tanya McDowell come in before the board to be able to say some remarks. I wanted to let you know about those changes. So thank you.
I was on, and I also like the team key, if we could please get a list of all of our principals who are retiring so that we can acknowledge them at our next board meeting.
Fantastic. We'll do that.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Thank you.
Dr. Fnoy, if we have a list of all the principals who are retiring, you're just going to scare us, so we probably shouldn't.
No, no, it's not like that. It's not like that, sir.
Mrs. Andrews, go ahead. Give her a hand up.
I just want to say I'm so happy for Mrs. Buckman, but I'm just so sad, too. Ms. Buckman came to Pioneer Park Elementary School along with her team and moved that school up to a B level. She is awesome. She comes all the way from Jupiter. All those years, she was truly committed to making a difference at Pioneer Park. She has relatives and has a history in the Glades Region because this is where she came from. And she truly was someone that walked the walk, talked the talk, and made a difference for all of the children at Pioneer Park. I know the people there are very sad. They're happy and sad at the same time. So, Mr. Superintendent and everyone, Mr. Oswald, we've got to get a great leader that can continue her work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. If there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote on the motion to adjourn. All in favor? opposed? Motion carries 7-0. See all at 5:05 p.m.